It is six thirty, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Is there anyone here for the two-minute open forum? Anyone here for two-minute open forum? Anyone here for two-minute open forum? All right. Review and approve council agenda.
Move to approve. Oh, I want to make, I'd like to add one item, item E, under regular agenda items. I'd like to add the advertising for bids of the Public Works Building located at fifty-one Eleventh Avenue South, Wake Park.
I'll second to, as amended.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda, item A, approved council minutes of three nineteen eighteen. Item B, approved council minutes of four two eighteen. Item C, approved council minutes of four nine eighteen. Item D, approved Board of Equalization and Appeals Meeting minutes of four nine eighteen. Item E, approved Board of Equalization Appeals Meeting minutes of four twenty-three eighteen. Item F, approved liquor license for Crooked Pint Ale House. Item G, approved liquor license for Family Fun Fest. Item H, approved resolution for notice of hearing on proposed unpaid city charges. Item I, approved Public Works seasonal worker position appointment. Item J, approved resolution approving county project within municipal corporate limits. Item K, approved administrative job descriptions, points, and pay grades. Item L, approved beginning the hiring process for the administrative position opening. Item M, approved change order number two for well number six contract A. Item N, approved change order number two for well number six contract B. Item O, approved joint powers agreement, Central Minnesota Human Trafficking Tax Pass Force. And item P, approved C S O position appointment.
I would like to pull B and E for reasons of abstention.
F?
F?
I, J, K.
F, which one?
F, I, J, K.
Want to move to approve A, C, D, G, H, L, M, N, O, P?
So move, second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is passed unanimously. Items A and, or B and E, Frank, somebody want to move to approve those?
Someone down in that end of the table.
I'll move to approve B and E, second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed and abstained?
Yes.
All right, took care of those. Item F, Mike?
F, I guess I have a question of why we don't have information on this. Normally, in the past, we've had the information of people applying for this. This time around, we have nothing to let us know what's going on with it, who they are, and...
In the past, in, for the past while now, we do not put the applications in the packet anymore because of some confidential information. So they type up the, the background information just right there, and that's what we've been doing.
Well, can't we keep that confidential information out and include names?
We can, but we, it was just our easier way of doing it, just trying to put it all in the background information. What, what information are you looking for?
To me, it'd be kind of hard to pass a license of this type if you don't have any information about this person. So on and so forth.
Couldn't they share who their name is, who's, who's the liquor license going to be under, or is that confidential?
Talking about the licensee.
Yes.
The person applying for the liquor license for an establishment.
I don't see an issue with, with the license name.
But there is some information like...
A home address?
Yeah, stuff like that, that we cannot give out. So we would be, we would be cutting out your application, if we put the whole application in, you'd be cutting out a bunch of stuff. So we were trying to get it in, just in the background information.
I, I, I guess in reality, it, does it really make a difference who owns it, and I assume that they're here and they've been vetted, you know?
I would hope so, at this point, yes.
Yeah, the police department has vetted these people, so I would...
But there's not even an approval from...
We can try to be a little more detailed in the background information, if that's what you'd like.
Well, we don't even have an approval from the PD, if I remember right here.
Yeah, it does, it says all background checks have been approved, have been...
Did it say that? I can't remember, looking in it.
Yeah, it does.
Well, then maybe in the future, we can do something to improve, so at least we know who's applying for it.
Sure.
Who's the actual person or the manager, if it's a franchise.
Sure, we can try to get a little more information in there.
All right, somebody want to move to approve F?
So move.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously. Let's see, L, or H, I.
I guess, again, on, I'd like to know why we have to hire nine seasonal workers, um...
Did you talk to Bill?
Not yet, haven't.
It's a little late now.
I, you know, that's, that's an awful lot of extra people for some of the things I see that are going on around town, so... I don't know. I wish, when they let these seasonal positions out, that the department heads would let us know what they're needed for, and how long, and what's expected of these people to do, because we have full-time people that are doing jobs. And we've got fairly decent amount of those. We've contracted about everything out we can. And why do we need to keep hiring temp, 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 this and that, so, that's my concern.
Okay, I'm gonna, I just say it again, as I said last time, I, I really think that that's a concern that you have, and I, it's a valid concern. And I, I really would highly recommend that you sit down with Bill for, it's probably a little late for twenty eighteen, but, well, you got a year now. And, and maybe it's, it's just good knowledge for the whole council. So, somebody want to move to approve I?
I'll move to, to approve I.
I'll second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed?
Aye.
Three to one.
Um... Okay. J is kind of the same thing as licensing, well, there's no information in our packet about this. This is the first time I've heard about it, ever came up. What's gonna happen? Are our roads gonna be shut down one lane at a time, or are they gonna be directional, or what's gonna happen with it?
Well, they did say they weren't, they weren't gonna shut down our roads, they didn't even have traffic on them. And this one goes, this year goes from, I think, Fifteenth Avenue to Interstate, next year it'll go, I think, from Fifteenth Avenue to Highway fifteen?
No, the way I understand it, it's, it's concrete from Fifteenth Avenue to the Sauk River Bridge, and they're gonna do...
That's what it is, yeah.
This year, for, I don't know if it's north side's first or south side, but they're gonna cross over traffic, so it'll be two-lane during that, that whole construction. So they'll do traffic on the north side, rebuild the south, then switch it over, and then rebuild that section.
They're gonna try to detour traffic then, because holy buckets, if we're down to one lane each.
There is some detours in here, yeah, it's, but...
The, the whole packet was a hundred and fifty-something pages, there's no way it could be sent to us, so I...
No, it's right here.
We didn't have any information on here.
No, the plans are right here, that...
There were some saying it's gonna be paved in concrete.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's all it was.
All right. Two sentences.
Just also to note, too, they are gonna put a left-hand turn lane eastbound at the Slumberland Cafe Renaissance. Right now, there's none there, you know, so people do turn there, they're slowing down, so... I did lobby to get a, that is a full interchange over there. Put in the conduits for future semaphore, and then to re, think about removing the one at McKay's. It sounded just making more traffic sense, but they got them to at least get the turn lane in there, and they're still keeping the other one open, so...
All right, somebody want to move to approve J?
I will move to approve J.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously. Item K.
K, kind of, how can we approve pay grades when we don't know what the point systems are and...
Know what the point systems are, they've been given out.
If the points come back, they haven't come...
Yeah.
They're on there.
They're on there. They're in the background information.
That's, yep, they're there.
They're on here?
Yeah.
That current position, they're gonna move up to, I think, a four in the first step.
The points went from a hundred and eighteen to a hundred and thirty-something, I believe, and that put her into one more pay grade up, or pace, or step up, but not, no, pay grade.
The, the administrative secretary position is moving up from a hundred sixteen points to a hundred sixty-five, which would move it from a pay grade three to a pay grade four.
I don't know, I...
That's the, the, um...
That's Jesse's position, yes.
And then the building and planning, uh, planning part of it, the administrative building and planning associate is at a points of a hundred eighty-three. Which is the same, I think, still a pay grade four. It doesn't say.
Which is what it is now.
Right, whatever it is now, yes.
I guess I didn't, didn't see it on here, and that was my question.
Oh, yeah, it's in there someplace.
Somewhere, must be buried because...
It's in the background information, the staff report.
All right, somebody want to move to approve K?
So move.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously. Boy, we finally got through that. All right, regular agenda.
You'd expect.
A through P, for Pete's sake, yeah. All right, variance request, Grand Depot signage and rear yard setback. John?
Thanks, Mayor Miller. Carla, if you could toggle to my display, please? I'll preface this for my next couple of reports, just noting that I've got a cold, so my voice is a little off, and I'm a little bit foggy, so forgive me for any missteps. First item for tonight, we have a pair of variances for height and square footage of an elevated sign and rear yard setback request for the Grand Depot out on Highway twenty-three, submitted by Tim Miller, owner of the Grand Depot. This, this is actually our only retail business currently in the established B P C two, I ninety-four, trunk, Highway twenty-three entrance corridor, Business Park Commercial District. It's a mouthful of zoning district, but it's the first one in that area since we acquired it from the township a while back. The, I'll start with the sign variance requests, I'm gonna go through the, the two requests separately. The sign variance is to allow for construction of a, a large elevated sign, very large, with incorporated three-sided LED electronic display. As, also on the screen, I'm gonna be scrolling through, as I go through the report, this is the general location map for anyone that's not familiar with the property. Mr. Miller, the applicant, owns the parcel outlined in red, and also the adjacent parcel to the right or to the east. The, for the sign request, the overall, overall proposed height is two hundred and twenty-five feet. This is up from a previous request of one hundred eighty-five feet at the time of an initial review consideration that was later withdrawn, so he could resubmit at the higher request. And the overall sign face area square footage of twelve thousand two hundred and seventy-four square feet, fifty-seven hundred square feet of which is proposed for the electronic reader board. I've enclosed all the material in your packet. Mr. Miller's done quite the extensive research with his sign company consultants. Let's see if I can reorient this, here we go. And he's done quite a bit of research and time and investment in the renderings. This is the, the design of the proposed sign. On the lower right is the existing sign on the property. And as you can see below them, it's kind of tough to make out in, at this scale on the screens, but below the, the small side in the corner, that's a, a human vigor for, for reference. So this is the, the proposed sign at its two hundred and twenty-five square foot height. The center portion in the red and with the, the vertical text in the middle, that's the three-sided LED display component. This signage consideration's actually been going on for a couple of years, and late twenty fifteen, actually, while the property was still in the township, we did review and ultimately approve through the Joint Planning Commission, a sign, a signed package that included a ground sign at sixty-five foot tall with a total aggregate signage of twenty-seven hundred and fifty square feet for the property. That included the, the wall signs and the ground sign. The county, when it was, when it was under their jurisdiction, calculated signage differently than, than we do. In the time since, Mr. Miller's been evaluating options for, for the signage due to the significant costs involved with, with the sign. In his research and working with the area sign companies, he feels he needs to get the signage above the tree line and make it more visible to traffic on both lanes, eastbound and westbound of I ninety-four, to get, to draw people off of ninety-four and onto twenty-three exit and into the store. I'll scroll through more of the mockups here. This, you can see, is a more side profile of the signage. And here you, there's a number of renderings that were prepared showing the, the signage at various distances. This one, for example, is three thousand eighty square, or, excuse me, three thousand eighty feet away from the property. So you could see the, the scale of the signage. Mr. Miller did actually have a, a sign company do a mockup of the structure, so this is a, a very, very realistic interpretation of what you'd get. Basically, they had, they built a framework that is the same size, and hung it with a crane, and then overlaid that, these images onto that structure. So this is about as accurate as you get without building it. The, the sign itself is proposed to be in the same location as the current ground signage of the property. If any consideration is given to a sign, I would recommend that, due to the height concerns of the adjacent roadway, that a fall zone be considered with a potentially revised location to limit potential for the sign to collapse onto a, a roadway. Not likely, any sign, especially something this large, would require major, major engineering to ensure it's safe. But still, we, we have been surprised before when signs have come down, so we have to plan for, for the worst. I would note that, the, for the planning, as I did with the planning commission, I'll note the same for the council, is a reminder that economic considerations aren't to be taken into account as part of a variance request, as per the enclosed standards. We have to review the request in the, the light of whether there's practical difficulties that exist, given the nature of the property, that, that cannot otherwise be addressed. We can't approve a variant simply because it's, it's good for sales, or it, it helps draw in business. There has to be a established hardship of a lot, lot that can't otherwise be worked around. These are some of the measurements of the proposed sign of the different components. I, I would note, I acknowledge the sign is very large, and it's far outside the city standards of the area, very far outside. I have had extensive conversations with the applicant, and I, I do believe that the adjacent tree lines being on property outside of the applicant's control. I do believe these are pre-existing factors that warrant some consideration. These are, these were not part of the request during the, the review some years ago by the planning commission. To the, to the planning commission, earlier when we reviewed this request, we actually delayed it coming to the council as Mr. Miller was traveling. So we delayed it the longest we could, and still be within the allowable one-twenty days after issuing an ex, uh, extension. I did opt to change my recommendation from what I made to the planning commission in light of what came up during the discussion at the planning commission, and some of the concerns that were brought up by residents and those in the area. I did list the, the conditions I recommended to the planning commission initially for reference, but I won't go through them just for sake of brevity. One item that, that did come up from the discussion of the planning commission was potential visual impact on our neighbors, the South Rockville. I did, after the planning commission, provide this information, the, the application package, the same material you're seeing tonight, the same that was provided to the planning commission, provided that to, to Rockville folks for their consideration, basically, as a, as a professional courtesy. Looking at the sightlines, there is, I mean, there is definitely some impact that would be on, on Rockville residents. They have more residences closer to this than, than we do, or are likely to for the, for the near future, at least. I did hear back from Rockville after follow-up today, and I provided the, the email to you that, that they've submitted. I understand that they provided it to their, their information, to their planning commission, city council, and, and they're not in favor of it. Given the extensive review, and, and I will note, this isn't easy, it's tough to make a, a recommendation against something for a, a good business and a, a, you know, a good owner and local business person. But given the discussion input of the planning commission and the public hearing, at this point, I would concur with the recommendation for denial as presented to the city, as presented in the city council packet. Although I would encourage you to discuss a request, or, excuse me, discuss the request and potential alternatives if the council deems fit. I would also recommend, as I just referenced, but just elaborating on that, the, the council does have the option to approve a variance to a lesser degree if, if you feel it's, it's appropriate. Anything less than the proposed, but still above the, the current standards. Current standards for that area are current, currently forty-five feet tall and two hundred and seventy-five square feet, so that's still fairly decent. Moving into the, the rear yard setback, oh, excuse me, I wanted to touch on one more item that was discussed at the, the planning commission. As you may recall, during the city council workshop where some of this review was requested a while back, there was some discussion at that time whether there may be some interest on behalf of the city of using the sign if it were ever approved in any configuration for potential signage for the amphitheater or other city events. That generated a lot of concern at the planning commission, even though there, there hasn't been a formal request, that would need to be reviewed as an off-premise sign. There, so there's no formal request made for that, but we just brought it up because it was something that was thought of potentially long-term. And that generated a lot of concern that it could pose an unfair advantage over others that, that have off-premise billboards in the area, and I see the, I see the concern of that. So I would recommend, no matter what happens, I'd recommend against any consideration of off-premise signage allowance for the sign if it's approved in a configuration, even though that would have to be a, a separate application. Moving into the rear yard setback request, this was a request to allow a rear yard setback to reduce the, the twenty-foot setback to zero feet for purpose of constructing an expansion for electrical service and backup generator. The Grand Depot has a lot of, focuses quite a bit, and really expensive food items, kind of boutique foods, fancy cheeses and those sorts of things. And they spoil quickly in the event of a power outage, which I understand is kind of a concern for the business. So the backup generator is intended to, to limit or prevent those losses. I would support the variance request, as the configuration of the property does limit the options for placement. Otherwise, I do believe that practical difficulties exist for, for this reason. There was some, some issues that came up between a neighboring property owner that maintains an access easement through the, the property under ownership of Mr. Miller, so there's, there's a little bit of disagreement there. One party feels that the access easement is intended to provide for a potential future roadway and maintain potential customer access to, to that property if the property ever develops. Mr. Miller, his council, believe that it's solely for access for that owner to get to his property for his enjoyment, to hug, to cut down trees and maintain it, basically. To involve, or to prevent getting ourselves involved in that too much, I was, I had been recommending that approval of that variance with the condition that the, the adjacent property owner would have to concur with the, the ultimate building permit application. I would ask that perhaps the city attorney could, could weigh in on that when the time is appropriate to, to get his take on that as well. I would note also that with, this property isn't plotted yet, so that building expansion, as you see, is going to trigger the planning requirement. So there's also an opportunity right now for the, the orders in the area to look at the easements and whether there might be better options for their location, and looking at long-term access for the area. And I've, I've recommended that, that they take a look at that, although it's really in their hands. I would recommend denial of the, the signage variance with the followings, with the findings of fact as outlined in the staff report. And I would recommend approval of the variance to reduce the rear yard setback from twenty feet to zero feet with the findings of fact and the conditions as established in the staff report. That concludes my report.
Thanks, John. All right, council, Mr. Miller is here, if you want to, I don't know if he wants to speak, or if you just want to ask him questions, or if you're ready to make any decision. We do have to make a decision tonight. The time period has expired on this, so we either have to vote it up, vote it down, but we cannot table this any longer, so...
John, did, John, did I understand that, that we've had plenty of opposition for this two hundred and twenty-foot sign? You were recommending possibility one seventy-five feet?
I was looking at, I believe, with the planning commission, and I, I wavered on this a lot. It's, it was really tough to, to make a recommendation when you're balancing such a, a large-scale project. My recommendation to the planning commission, when they reviewed the request in its current form, was for a height of one hundred and fifty fair, excuse me, one hundred and fifty feet and a total side face square footage not to exceed six thousand square feet. This was more in line with kind of what, what the city council reviewed at their work session sometime back. I think at, at that time, the, the request is for a hundred and forty feet tall. So I thought that was a reasonable split of the, of the request. But that was before we heard some of the, the pretty serious opposition from, from neighbors and, and some of the residents.
Tim, do you want to, if, if you want to speak, you can come with the microphone and give us your name and address, and have at it.
I'm Tim Miller from the Grand Depot, and I've been working on this sign for several years and trying to analyze the conditions out there, and trying to provide a very nice place for folks to work at and partake in society here within Wake Park now. So I'm trying to run an, an upstanding business. But there are some challenges with the site. Any of you folks that have driven by on the interstate, especially coming from Minneapolis, you cannot see the building or the signage until you're passed, so that, that's a major hardship. And I've been studying that for many, many years here now. And if I could have you, or John, if you could put up num, picture ten and eleven, mostly, ten and eleven, those are the views coming from Minneapolis or heading west on the interstate. Now, even though we have a sign here proposed at two hundred and twenty-five feet, and we did the math on the ramp length, so we subtract the ramp length from the distance, these photos were taken, it gives you a, a measurement, and then divide that by how fast the vehicles are typically driving, which then gives you how many seconds you are to the exit to make a decision if indeed you want to exit. Picture number ten gives you about eleven seconds. So even though two hundred and twenty-five foot sign is a tall sign, when you look at it with the countryside, these photos were taken when most of the leaves were off the trees already. And you can see on photo ten B that you can make it out, when the leaves are on the trees, it'll still be covering part of that bottom sign. As you get a little closer to the exit, you lose the trees. And then you, you can, the full sign is visible, and then you're only at five seconds away from the exit. And there's some, I'm sorry, there are some conflicting visuals there, of course, we have power, power lines now and a MinDOT sign. But at least the sign is visible there. So the site does have some major hardships for visibility. The, a lot of businesses, as you travel on ninety-four, many of them are along ninety-four. In other words, along the travel lanes themselves. But when you get to an intersection where you have a major... But when you get to an intersection where you have a major highway crossing and interstate like this, you either end up with a cloverleaf situation, or you have a large ramp access like we have here. Well, the ramp access pushes the property, which where the sign can be installed, farther and farther away from the traffic lanes. So not only do we have mature trees that are eighty feet tall and still growing, we're set way back from the actual travel lanes of the traffic. And then the trees, again, are fairly mature, they're on top of a hill, so it keeps compounding itself. And yes, two-hundred-and-twenty-five feet in itself without having other information is a tall sign. But when you look at these photos, especially ten, when they're about ten seconds away from the exit, if you bring that down twenty feet, thirty feet, you'll lose the whole bottom portion of that sign.
I don't think I mentioned it, but we tried to look at some existing structures around that are at or similar to in scale. Just as a reference point, the Smiley Water Tower, or Water Tower formerly known as Smiley, that one is a hundred-and-twenty-two feet tall per SEH records. So that gives you, something you see and pass by a lot of days as a kind of a reference point, because it's, in pictures you can see, but it's different when you have something you know that's in town that you can look at.
If you look at twelve B, there's a enlarged section there, what it's meant to show, and you can barely see it even at this photo, but there are some branches, again, the leaves are off a lot of these trees at the photos. But there are branches, very small, but they are just about to the bottom of the red sign. That's what we're trying to illustrate there. So when the leaves are all on the trees, that bottom round area below the red is going to start to be covered already, and they're still growing. So part of the reason, again, the sign height is, the height it's being presented is to get above the trees, to incorporate the setback, the great setback that we have at the top of the ramp, because that's as close as I can build the sign to the interstate. And then a comment I heard on this fall zone, that, I guess logically that makes sense, a fall zone, but I've never talked to different sign companies, they've never heard of it. And I just came back from Minneapolis Airport driving up here, and I'm looking at all these big poles, in fact, there you can see those poles, if those ever fell, they'd be on the road. So, you know, the fall zone is, it would be an ideal scenario, but if you push the sign back again, then it'd have to be taller, you're going to, you'd be pushed back into the trees, it'd have to be another fifty or seventy-five feet taller as you keep pushing it up into the forest to achieve a fall zone.
Well, Mr. Miller, I think a fall zone for something, this is unparalleled in my experience. I mean, it's not a reflection on you or your business, I mean, I've had a hard time kind of weighing this and putting personal feelings out of it, just going by professional planning criteria. But, I mean, a pole is a little bit different than the sign structure, I mean, the pole is, by its nature, it's a lot skittier diameter, it's, you know, we're just trying to account for if there's any approval that there's safety involved. It's a lot larger structure, not only as tall or taller, but it's larger all around.
Yeah, it would, the wind would be taken into account with all the engineering, so I mean, it's going to be engineered to stand there.
My thought was, we don't necessarily have a lot of oversight over the power lines, but we do have oversight over cellular antennas or cell phone towers, and we require those to maintain a fall zone, so my thought was we should apply it to something of equal or taller value.
Do you realize that's going to push the sign? Is that me getting too close to that picture? Do you realize that'll push that sign back? It would have to increase its height again to achieve the same visual.
Well, we'll leave it up to the council to determine the height.
Has MinDOT approved this?
I've asked him every year, and he always says it's up to the local jurisdiction. You know, I talk to them every year. And another thing, if I may add, the, I read through here a few times now, the remarks and some of the concerns they had on the sign, the, they call it a video display screen. So my conversation with MinDOT, am I too close to this?
No, you're all right.
Is that why that's doing it? They will only allow a photo to change out seven seconds, or longer, can leave a photo up more than seven, but you can't move it quicker than seven. They don't want it turning into a strobe scenario or distract from traffic. So I do know that. So relative to that, my intent to use it was for product shots that don't move, they're just a picture up there of a product. I don't intend to have moving motion pictures going on up there. It's just one shot, seven seconds.
Our digital display standards are roughly the same, so they have the static requirements, and we don't allow for the streaming video either, even though we just got the request from another business and had to decline it, just, that's something we don't allow for.
So my intent was just a single shot up there. And then the, because of the color with one of our logos, as I'd made mention in my remarks, the green is really nice, the green Grand Depot logo, but it blends into the green treetops, quite nice. But the red is our main store logo, so that would stand out. So it's real important that we can see the red above the trees. The fact that I've asked for a digital screen, to me, that's not a make or break deal. What is, is that you can see the sign.
Last time when we discussed this, it was at a hundred-and-fifty feet, and I really thought we had kind of an agreement, and all of a sudden it's gone up four-hundred or five-hundred, seven-hundred and seven, or seventy-five feet it's gone up in height.
Yeah, I had a crane come out in December for the first time, and actually, to scale, put a structure up.
I think we saw that, I think we saw those pictures.
We seen the flags, yes.
Yeah, we saw the flags.
Those were before, this was a different, this was a larger crane, and we built a mock-up scale of the size, and we hoisted that up and then superimposed a picture on it to get above the treetops. So it's been a learning curve for me each time to make it more accurate and depict what it would look like, so nobody's surprised, you wouldn't be surprised, I wouldn't be surprised, you know, this is substantial. So, you know, I did a lot of research, and I think I did it quite well. But the goal is to get a visual above the treetops, that's the underlying goal. And yes, it did start out quite small, in fact, I remember we were in a meeting, we were at sixty-five feet, and I thought that was great, and that was before I ever did any tests, where I hired a crane to come out.
Okay. I guess I got a question for John or whoever. There seems to be a conflict in the height here. According to our notes that we received, as of December of this last year, we got previously talked about a request of a hundred-and-eighty-five feet.
Yep, that was, Mr. Miller made a previous request to the planning commission for the, more or less the same sign, but scaled down. That was going to be heard at the December meeting. At the last moment, actually, the evening of the meeting, Mr. Miller noted he wanted to increase the size of the sign to what it is now. He did some further research and decided it needed to be at the two-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot size and scaled up. So he withdrew that request from the planning commission at that time. And then, that's why you didn't see that, because it was formally withdrawn, and he submitted a new application with this at the current size package.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak to this sign ordinance?
Thank you all, my name is Jeff Lonigan, and I'm a fairly large property owner out in that area.
Excuse me, Jeff, could you speak into the microphone, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. My name's Jeff Lonigan, and I'm a fairly large property owner out in that area, and I understand Tim's concerns with signage and being able to be seen. I have a request coming right after this for some additional signage out there as well. And I think, you know, that could relieve some of these problems he's talking about, about visibility before the entrance there. We're going to have some, if approved tonight, we'll have some options there that, you know, people in City of Wake Park can take advantage of. As far as tree lines and all that stuff, I am concerned about the height of the sign as well, because, you know, fifteen, twenty, thirty years down the road, we're going to be looking at doing fairly large commercial development out there. And, you know, visibility is huge when it comes to all that stuff. Understand the hill that's out there right now. My planning for the future is to push that hill and level that whole site out eventually and make it a nice commercial development. So with doing that, you know, a lot of those obstacles are there now, but we have to look at long-term, what's the impacts of when we do stuff now, what will it be twenty, thirty years from now? And then the other thing is off-site premise advertising, I would ask you to make sure that that doesn't happen, because if you have one person that's going fifteen times larger than what I can put out there, that's unfair advantage. So, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John, can you put up that property description there?
The general location map?
Yeah.
Yep, I could do that. We'll bring it back here.
I'd actually like to address the setback variance, I don't know if you want me to do that after your sign discussion here or no?
Actually, they're both together, the setback is for the, yeah, okay, no, they're both together, they're both part of this.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm Adam Ripple with Rinkinew Law Offices, I'm here on behalf of Doug Frederickson, the neighbor in question who owns the easement over the property. Mr. Frederickson doesn't have any objection to the business there or the variance, the issue is ensuring that that access right is treated just like anybody else's access right, and maintaining setbacks from that, or in the alternative, working an alternate route. And so, Mr. Frederickson's very open to working with the property owners on that. I know the staff recommendation is that that's a condition, would really like to reinforce that request. And also, a little clarity, I, these things sometimes fall through the cracks, and so I'd like to ensure that that would be a condition that had to be satisfied before any kind of building permit would be issued by the city.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, just for the previous person that was up here, could you show where your property is adjacent to this property?
Do you have that, John?
I can toggle over to my map, let's see if it's still up here.
We have about a hundred-and-sixty acres just to the west, or east, I'm sorry. So it's on the other side of Doug Frederickson's property there.
It'll just take me a moment to pull it up.
While he's doing that, anybody else have any questions?
Actually, that exhibit that they were showing, that twelve B from traffic coming from the Twin Cities, that hillside, that was my hillside there that it was looking up over, so.
Oh, okay.
Pretty much when you come from that bridge that goes over to the Four Hundred Club, the Pleasant Lake area, that, all the way up to Fred Drug, Doug Frederickson's property is our property. So we have excellent visibility there if, for, if there's an agreement made there, we're more than happy to work with people there as well.
This would be the Lonigan parcel here. I'll back it up a little bit so you can see the, this one here?
Just down.
Oh, just down below.
Be in that square, kind of? Be west of this location?
Yep, the Grand Depot is over here.
We have that square, and directly below that square, there's a triangle that runs along the freeway as well.
My iPad's a little slow, but it's this one here.
Oh, right there.
Yep.
Yeah.
So.
All right, any other questions, council? If not, I need a motion to do something with, let's see, where are we at here? To either move to approve or deny the variance for the ground sign with a maximum square footage, a height of two-hundred, no, let's see, a height of two-hundred-and-twenty-five feet and twelve-thousand square feet of signage.
Can we change the height requirement, or does that have to come back?
You can, but I think it'd be neater, cleaner if we just either approve it or deny it, and the request would come back through the process.
I'll make a motion to deny, it's just too big.
Pardon me?
I'll make a motion to deny.
So if you say... We can't find some, I don't even know if there is a happy medium.
That's, I guess that's what I'm getting at, how much time do we want to spend here trying to discuss if it should be a hundred-and-seventy-four-point-two feet, or if it should be a hundred-and-two feet, or it should be two-hundred-and-twenty-four feet, nine inches? I think that that could be done either at a work session or the planning board, again, if we don't agree with this height and this size. Gives us more opportunity to discuss it.
Well, you have a motion.
I have a motion, I need a second. I'll second it, I think it's, I think the business is a good business, but I really do think that we're setting a very, very slippery slope of a precedence here.
Well, I guess the only thing, we kind of did come to an agreement at a certain other height than what this was.
That's exactly what I was aiming for as well.
So that's, and that's why I second it, I think there's, I think there's some leeway here yet, but I just don't know that tonight is the night that we should discuss that. I think it'd be better if we sat down and really went through this with Tim and the Lonigans and Howard Lossat, Fredericks.
Well, then he has to reapply.
He's going to have to, yeah, but we're not going to get this washed out tonight. You going to agree to a hundred-and-fifty feet?
I don't think that would be enough to go this far.
See, that's what I'm saying.
Well, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, it's not...
A hundred-and-ninety-five?
Yeah, see, that's what I'm saying, that, you know, we could be here till midnight just to decide if this should be a hundred-and...
Let's have a little compliment.
Yeah. Nobody brought groceries.
Nowhere.
I have a motion and a second to deny the request with the idea that, you know, I think there's still some grounds to work here, but I think, I do believe this is too big, so.
How much of a hurry are you in trying to get this thing figured out? It's been a while since you've been starting, are you wanting to get this thing done before summer, or?
Can you all hear me from back here? Can you come up to the microphone?
You should come up.
Come up to the microphone.
I don't know if you folks had a chance to look at the timeline of that site from when it started, when the interstate went through, but there's been four or five businesses there, and they've all had hardships. And I've been there ten years, there's a problem with that site, and it's signage. We got forty-some thousand cars going by every day, but we can't get them in. So when you, that's a very good point, how much time do I have? Honestly, not much. No, it's been ten years and...
That'll be the incentive to sit down and to work out a number that I think we can agree with.
I'm not kidding, you'll be working with another guy in about a year if we don't figure this out. And it's never going to end until you establish, either change the zoning or give somebody a sign that works there. That's after ten years, that's my comment.
I have a motion and a second, further discussion?
Wait a minute, yes. If we deny it and he has to reapply, does he have to pay a bunch of fees and stuff again?
You know, we can waive them.
Waive them?
I'd suggest you, if you're interested in doing, if you're interested in doing that, I'd suggest that you would deny it, and then say that if he reapplies within six months, that you waive the fee.
Okay.
We would, I would be, I would be amenable to that, just because a lot of the legwork for the background and everything is done, we have to renotice, but largely, we'd be, the background information stays the same, so that work is already done.
Do you want to amend your motion?
I was going to say, should that be part of the motion?
I'd say it should be a second motion.
Yes, I would amend the motion.
I'd do, I'd do two motions.
Second motion, oh, okay, one is to deny, one would be then to give him six months without a fee. Okay, we'll just leave it the way it was.
Yes. Now, this is just to deny it. Per portion of it, not...
Not to say... Not the setback.
Not the setback.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. And then we have a motion to, uh, waive the fee for six months?
Yes.
I'll make a motion for that.
Second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously. Now the other one is a setback, uh. We've got a a person that's concerned, uh, about the setback. Uh, I I don't know that that's a real big problem, but I I'd like to have it worked out before we agreed on no setback. And I and I think Tim's, I think you're willing to do that. It sounded like you're willing to give him that, you know, a a un- an easement back there. And I don't know what that means exactly, so.
They're in an easement right now and I I I'm just suggesting you're proposing we build up to the easement. So the easement describes a certain area and there are rights given within that described area. It's about thirty-three feet wide. But beyond that, really competing, my understanding, the folks I've talked to, your attorney, um, there aren't any rights outside of thirty-three feet.
Can you throw that other map up real quick again?
On on this easement issue, uh, you know, typically, if if the easement works a factor, because the owner, uh, and applicant owns both parcels, I would typically wa- waive the the variance requirement to the zoning lot considering it one parcel for for that purpose. But it's because of the easement issue that that drives the the need for for the variance. They are separate legal, but tha- that's part of the reason why we I opted to reverse course and follow this proper proceeding.
Gordon, you got an opinion on that?
I'm not familiar with the easement at all. If I understand, you want to impose a setback from the easement because they're separate entities that own it?
Yes, and because because there was an issue raised, but it's it's basically because of the separate ownership and the.
Under, under ordinance, what's a setback?
Twenty feet.
And their variance is asking to?
To take that down to zero.
And and what and what actually is your client's, uh, concerned with that?
Um, the concern you would have if your driveway was limited like that, if your neighbors didn't have to have a setback, um, the original service vehicles, I mean, there's a reason we have setbacks from, and it's not a setback from the easement, correct me if I'm wrong. The setback from the property line. The easement is located right on the property line.
The concern I heard from Mr. Frederick earlier was that snow or, basically that that sort of thing could come off the roof and, um, impede passage through the easement. I think that was, that was his concern.
Would five feet work? Would five feet work? I mean, that would, that would stop the snow from going onto the road. I don't know.
The snow is gonna be plowed anyhow because I'm using it as well.
Oh.
It's an easement where we both can use it.
Hmm.
So I'll be using it as well and when I'm using.
So you're gonna keep it open too, yeah?
But there's no, there's no way to perform maintenance on that side of the structure without impeding access on that easement. I mean, that that's the concern is all those rights that come with Mr. Miller's being able to maintain his structure, infringe on my client's use of that easement.
Um, where is this sign going exactly in this little corridor?
It's not the sign, this is for the.
This is for the.
I understand that, but I wanna know where the sign here is.
Yeah, he may be able to get closer.
We're going to give the setback.
We're not. The setback is for the.
For the road.
Is is for the generator.
Generator.
Yeah, that's, they're two separate requests.
There's two separate requests. This is for the generator, which is in the back of the building, which is where that red line is here.
Let's see if we can. I believe that's a sign right in that area.
That's a sign.
Mm-hmm. And where is this setback or easement?
The easement issue is kind of in this area back here where we're looking at adding, uh, the expansion. You can see that's, that's why, uh, I feel this should be justified because of the layout of the building. There's no, there's only nowhere else that could go. So I'm taking it kind of in this area here and that's the goal.
And the property to the right of that red is part of Mr. Miller's also?
It's a different entity, but.
It's it's owned by the same person, but it's a different name on it.
Same person, group.
Yeah.
And your parcel that you're concerned about is to the east?
Right.
South or?
You could.
Or south?
You could kinda follow the easement here, um, on the pointer. You could see it kinda finds its way down and then it snakes its way through.
So nor will the proposed addition won't parallel the whole road either. It's just gonna nick it a little bit.
No, it's a, it's a section of it, but.
Yeah.
How many, how many feet?
Oh, let's see here.
No, how many, how many feet on that for, on that easement? How, for how, for how long will you be at, close to that easement? How many feet?
Kind of the expansion size.
Size of the generator and pad.
Eventually, it's gonna be the whole length of the building, my master plan. Right now, it's probably a hundred and fifty feet.
Okay.
It'll be that whole length eventually.
Again, Mr. Fredrickson's not looking to stop the project, just ensure that there's an appropriate setback from any adjacent building to that access easement, to ensure that he has uninterrupted rights of access.
Gordon, you see a problem with that?
No.
I mean.
I I mean, I guess, uh, Mr. Miller has an issue if he infringes infringes on the easement, uh, by Mr. Ripple's client. I I guess I think with Mr. Ripple's going, we just don't wanna have a, establish a problem.
Potential for conflict that we don't think is necessary.
But if you're five feet off and none of it's on the easement, I I guess, you know, Tim's gonna have to be able to paint it, have send service people out there without infringing on the easement. That's gonna be his obligation.
But he uses the easement also.
Yeah, the easement is not an exclusive, uh, my understanding, an exclusive easement is one where only Doug can use it. This is not, this is one we both can use. So I can go set up a ladder there and paint my building if I have to.
Sure, but you can't infringe on his easement rights. I assume that's for in- ingress and egress?
Yes, right now, it's because he's using it around recreational use.
But to me, that'd be no different than working anyplace else. You just put a cone up for a day to paint something and you take it down and you, he could use it at night.
Doesn't that happen in the, in the alleyways a lot in the cities?
Of cour- that's what I'm saying. It's, I don't know that there's much difference between.
Garage is built too close to the alleyways.
I'd feel a lot better with five feet than zero.
So I've worked for you, Tim?
The building's only twenty feet wide, the addition?
Oh.
No, that doesn't work.
Okay.
Doug had, Doug and I had spoke first part of January before I went south. And he was saying we could move it a few feet. The problem is with moving it, it's not just that easy. Um, I went down to Florida several years ago after I acquired the site. And Doug went and cut a whole bunch of trees on the easement, go out and. Did a massive one on firewood, it's a hundred and seventy-five year old trees. I came back from Florida and counted, I think, a hundred and twenty trees. So it's not just moving an easement, cutting trees and then I have to, uh, according to the easement document, I have to bring it up to the existing, quality that it is now. So it'd be removing all these hundred and seventy-five year old trees and then moving the road over. Is it possible? Yes. Is there a reason to cut down a hundred and seventy-five year old trees or am I painting the building?
And Council, what's your wishes on easement setback? Need a motion, need approve or deny the setback from twenty feet to zero feet?
I want to approve it and let the neighbors work it out, so everybody is happy and things get done.
That a motion?
Well, in interest of getting things moving, I'll make a motion to approve.
He just was making a suggestion.
Well, that I was thinking out loud, but I'll second.
Further discussion?
Do we have to add the verbiage that the neighbors need to?
That's part of an easement. They already know that.
Yeah, okay.
Is there a way that if something does hap- well, they can always change that easement then?
They can, sure.
If they want to, under agreement, change the easement or move the road over five feet to whatever.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously.
I was gonna ask, were there any conditions? I, it wasn't clear to me from your motions.
Uh, is to di- is to make the setback from twenty feet to zero?
Without any conditions for?
Just the same conditions that are within the variance that are in there now that Tim has to maintain that road and whatever, however that variance reads today. He's not gonna screw with that road because he needs it.
Yes.
All right, item B, amend ordinance fifty-three dot two zero off from a sign corridor map. John, that must be yours too.
That's mine again. Carlo, would you mind toggle, toggling back to the iPad? These two are the, uh, the same area, um, and submitted about the same time, but, um, unrelated, just a, uh, odd coincidence. Uh, in the summer of twenty seventeen, I was approached by a property owner, uh, who's a tenant tonight, uh, um, interested in the Interstate ninety-four frontage in the southern half of the community, uh, looking at, uh, potentially, a long-term putting billboards, uh, in that area. Uh, and looking at it, I did see that our our corridor map didn't really extend to this area. But it also didn't reflect the the annexation, um, from, uh, late twenty sixteen. Um, after consideration, given the ex- uh, expansion of the city limits into this area and, uh, in an effort to, uh, potentially draw westbound, uh, I ninety-four travelers into the city businesses via twenty-three and the exit, uh, located in this area, which we've, uh, just discussed to some degree. Uh, I would be supportive of expanding the off-premise side corridor map as attached. Uh, basically what we're doing is, uh, stretching the, uh, area. It go- it goes down twenty-three right now. Though, uh, what I'm proposing is adding some frontage along I ninety-four from the area, um, kinda parallel with, uh, one thirty-seven. And then taking it all the way to the city's edge. Uh, I actually proposed a smaller area initially. Uh, but the planning commissioner, their discussion, they they recommended just taking it all the way to the city border, um, and being done with it essentially. They thought that it'd be good to do it in one shot. Uh, this would have the most, the most impact on westbound traffic along the stretch of I ninety-four before the exit. And, uh, by my count and estimate would allow for, uh, up to, uh, perhaps nine total billboards, um, in the area. Fewer, if any, would be digital because they have a a larger setback requirement between them. Uh, I'm not proposing any, uh, other off-premise sign standards, um, adjusting those at all. And I I noted for folks that have been interested, I'm not, uh, not supportive or interested in reducing the setbacks between or the distance requirements between signs. That's, um, not something I really feel is appropriate this time. It's just solely the the map that's being, that's being proposed. Uh, I would note that off-premise sign conditional use permits, because billboards do require the conditional use permit. Um, this is kind of a limited area and we do review those on a first-come, first-served basis. Um, so it's, it's pretty much first, first draw for those that are interested. Um, I'm recommending approval of the, uh, amended map as submitted as proposed and the planning commission, uh, concurred with that and had recommended the the map as it's, uh, outlined attached.
All right, Council, what's your wishes?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously. Thanks, John. All right, item C, vacation easement on Waterford Lane. Uh, the Wake Park City Council held a public hearing at City Hall, nineteen thirteenth Avenue North at six thirty PM or soon thereafter on Monday, May seventh, twenty eighteen to hear the request of Mc Meredith Development and Margaret A. Capus, uh, reversal, what's that? Some kind of living trust, reversible living trust to vacate and relocate the following utility and drainage easements. Uh, those parts of drainage and utility easements as dedicated on the recorded plat of Windsor Green Two. It's got a whole bunch of footage and numbers there. Uh, the public hearing is now open at seven thirty-three. Is there anyone here to speak at that public hearing?
John?
Is there anyone here to speak at that public hearing? Oh, it went to seven thirty-four. Somebody wanna close it?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, public hearings closed at seven thirty-four. What's your wishes on, uh, vacation?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously. Consideration of awarding twenty eighteen overlay project bid. Terry, is that you?
Yes, it is. Uh, Your Honor, Council, on, uh, April twenty-sixth, uh, we received five bids, uh, for your twenty eighteen overlay improvement project. One bid was considered a non-responsive bid because the proper paperwork was not filled out and submitted at the time of the bid. Uh, the low bid was submitted by Tri-City Paving. And anyway you look at it, and I'll be talking about the alternatives, uh, or alternates here. Uh, anyway you look at it, uh, Tri-City, uh, is the low with any combination of the alternates. So the first alternate that we looked at, um, um, was the alternate to, essentially Mill and Phil, Wade Avenue, from Second Street South to the South City Limits. I can't remember the name of the street that goes into, uh, the subdivision we just mentioned, um.
Well, Waterford?
Yes, uh, and so, um, as you are aware, uh, just about half of that street is in the city of St. Cloud. Uh, and I know Sean and Bill met with, uh, City of St. Cloud on Tuesday last week.
Yep. Yeah, we met with Matt Staling, the city administrator over there. Um, he was, uh, appreciative to call the meeting. He agrees that, you know, we need to work together on this. Uh, he was gonna go back and talk to, I don't know if it was the council or the mayor or whatever, and try to get back to us with the decision before tonight. Um, Sean had reached out to, for him again today, uh, and nothing heard. Uh, not sure what that means. Um, he he basically agreed that, you know, there's something needs to be done. We we, I even threw the pitch out that, okay, if you agree to this, we'll have a written document. We'll, we'll take care of this section and we'll, you do another section of equal distance and the equal value in, under your contract or stuff like that. So, uh, it's not in a capital improvement plan right now and and he acknowledged that. But, uh, felt that, you know, it might be something that they could do, uh, especially that this year, but he wasn't gonna give us a final answer. So at this point, I'd say it's kind of fifty-fifty on their part. And then also the big thing out of that was is to do capital planning with them. Cause I said the road's getting worse and worse every year and we need to have us to be on the same page of when we're gonna do the next section or the following sections.
Right, I I, yeah, I think we need to work those together. I I honestly can't, I could, I don't think I'd approve that we do this without an agreement that says they're gonna either give us some, another hundred feet someplace else or in twenty twenty, they're gonna pay that money or something, but.
We have to have an agree.
I'm not gonna do it on a, on a word that that person may not be there next week, so.
Yeah, no, he agreed to that. He said definitely, we brought that up, that there needs to be an agreement written up between the two of us, protect both sides, so.
Okay.
So that that you haven't heard a definitive answer either way. Uh, there is one way that we can, uh, kind of keep the integrity of of a good bid here. Uh, in that we could, uh, award this project with the alternate. I did talk to Tri-City this afternoon and I said, uh, would you be willing, if the city of Wake Park and St. Cloud were not able to come to an agreement, would you be willing to, uh, allow us to take that out by change order in these?
Oh, okay.
So we can leave it in and then change it out.
And 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 take it out by change order.
Okay.
That was a, a good, uh, compromise.
Okay.
The the second alternate, uh, is, uh, for some decorative crosswalks on thirteenth Avenue. And, uh, Bill and I have been talking about this. We did, uh, include, uh, a decorative alternate, uh, on three locations on thirteenth Avenue, First Street, Second Street, and Third Street. Um, and so Bill's brought up the, uh, the product that we've been looking at. We, uh, did meet with, uh, some product reps. Uh, and essentially that's very close to what, uh, what we've got specked in the project. It would be a, um, reflective crosswalk stripe, uh, on either side of the crosswalk, um, plus a, a decorative, call it, uh, a paver, uh, type, uh, decoration between the the stripes. We also are calling for, uh, what I might call a, you know, a snowplow protector on either side of of that, uh, that white, uh, strip as well to keep the snowplows from, uh, chipping away at it. Um, this product is, uh, This product is, uh, a product that, uh, essentially gets, I'm gonna say molded to the, by heat, to the surface of the bituminous. It's not pressed in, so it does, you know, stick up a little bit. Uh, hence that's why we wanna have kind of that, that protector, uh, out in front of the, uh, the white stripe. Uh, Bill, uh, had an opportunity. They, they've got, uh, a couple of installations in Monticello.
Yeah, they have, she have three different products and, uh, they all are, are well. I mean, each one is a different method. Uh, this one is less obtrusive. One of them, one of their methods is where they actually, uh, pound in a grid with Viber packer. So it can be noisy and they do this at night. And so that's, that kind of detracts, especially we're talking about the area of a residential. The Monticello has three different, these three products in, in their city, all in different locations. And so, uh, I've looked at all of them and I think the one that, that we had specked out here and, and got a bid on is, is a high-quality product. It does not show any damage from snowplows. And Terry talks about that snowplow edge, it's actually a black. So you actually end up with a black piece of strip of this, uh, mastic. Then it's the white crosswalk and then you go into that. What that black does is it protects the snowplow and it also gives that contrast. Because when you pave it right away, it's black, but it turns gray after time. So that gives you that crosswalk contrast with the reflective, pretty, um, the section that I saw where this is at, i- it's over by their high school. And, uh, I thought it weighed better than one of the other products that they had out there, so. I brought this up, uh, thought about using this out on Parkway Drive a couple, three years ago, if you remember right. I think might have just been even in a work session where I thought about doing this. When we came across thirteenth avenue, uh, this project, this street out here is very highly traveled. You guys know that. And sometimes the speeds out here are a little bit higher because they're using it as a cut through for the light on fifteen. We have a city park that borders it all the way along there, um, and we have residents on the other side. At today's date, we do not have a physical crosswalk at, at First Street North. We don't have one marked there and just the white solid line going across that Second Street and then that Third. So the intention was here to throw it into an alternate to see, see what kind of price we'd get on it. And use this, the criteria would be is it's a beautification. It's a traffic calming because it's different. And it's obviously the maintenance is a lot less. I mean, you don't have to go out there and paint it every year and keep it up and it stays up most of the year. Especially in the winter time, you know, it gets a little bit dirty after a while, but, uh, uh, the spring rains clean that right up, so. I could go either way with it. I saw the price and I think we're at about.
Thirty, about twenty-nine thousand.
Twenty-nine thousand. It's, you know, I thought, I was hoping for that twenty to twenty-five at the range. So it's, to me, I go fifty-fifty on this. If you were gonna put this product in the city, this is the only street that I can think of where it fits both. You're trying to beautify your park area and, and making safe crosswalks with a little bit of traffic calming because of the traffic and the speeds out here. But I'll leave that up to you, council.
What happens at Third Street? Because I see this as being a square. So that Third Street, we're not going across Third Street?
Yeah, you, you're right. Uh, the, there, there's only one crosswalk at each location.
Yes.
It's not this, it's not this four-way. It's just one, one, one. It's not the square, right?
Right. Yeah, we're just trying to, I'm trying to show you kind of a visual of.
Well, can you scroll it up just a little bit too, Bill? Open to the.
Top, this one?
No, the other way.
Oh, sorry.
I should say down then. Okay.
How long before this has to be redone?
Well, that's kind of a question.
When it's worn out.
When it's worn out.
Is that, is that the life of the road or is that before the road?
Is that what?
Is that the life of the road or is that before the road?
We hope the life of the road is, you know, thirty years. I, I rather doubt that you're gonna see thirty-year life on this. And so, um, it's a new product and, and hence there's, there, what I've heard is that, uh, they have installations that are in, uh, seven, eight years, uh, that are showing very little signs of wear. And so I guess I can't really tell you anything beyond that.
Where are those? Florida, Texas?
No, they, they have some in Minnesota, like, uh.
I think that's.
What do you do with this when it wears out?
Well, I think if, if it comes off and patches, my understanding is that you can, you can take it, this comes in.
Tiles.
Tiles and you can.
I just watched.
Cut them out and.
Yeah.
Heat them up, uh, and patch them in. Uh, if it's a wholesale failure, um, I suspect it, it comes off pro- probably in a mill situation, if I had to guess.
Yeah, I would think you would cut it and just re-patch it in. All right, what's your wishes on that one? Alternate, alternate to thirty thousand dollars worth of something we're not sure of.
So one, one thing I'd like to mention is that.
It's Minnesota.
The total budget, uh, looking at, uh, you know, if you awarded alternate one and two, uh, you can see from the, uh, bid tab that, that your total there is, uh, six hundred and thirty-six thousand. Uh, looking at a, a fairly decent contingency and some engineering, um, you know, we're looking at a total project cost of about seven hundred and eighty-two thousand. That does not factor in what you might get from the city of St. Cloud. We think that the contribution from St. Cloud, if they pay half of Wade Avenue, would be on the order of eighty-three thousand dollars or so. Uh, now, having said that, the seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, without any contribution from St. Cloud, is still a little bit less than what you had in your capital improvement plan for twenty eighteen for these projects. The, the capital improvement plan had a, had a total of eight hundred and twenty-six thousand versus the seven hundred and eighty-two thousand that, that you have.
Well, we're all pretty sure if St. Cloud doesn't pay, we're not doing wait. That section, correct?
I, yeah, I would go along with that. I, I mean, I, I hate to.
Change order that off.
Hate to say that, but I think that's where we gotta put the pressure, so.
Yeah.
You know, after we did this, okay, for bids, uh, we kind of drove thirteenth avenue here. There's a lot more streets in this town than thirteenth avenue that are in a heck of a lot worse straight, uh, than thirteenth. Thirteenth looks pretty damn good.
So the, the key to doing these type of maintenance projects is to do them at the right time. And typically on a roadway that's somewhere in the, I would say eighteen to twenty-three year age, kind of a five-year span there, you're typically looking at the best treatment then is, is probably an edge mill and overlay. Beyond that, uh, probably at year thirty-five or so, uh, you're probably looking at a complete mill and fill. Um, and beyond that, you're probably, you know, out at year forty-five or fifty, you know, you're probably looking at another reconstruct. I would agree, Mike, that, that there, what happens is, is that you don't wanna put down maintenance on streets that have gotten too far along and, and that is kind of throwing bad money after good. And so our thought here is that we try to do the right maintenance at the right time. And there might be some roadways, um, Second Street North as an example, that, that are just gonna require reconstruction.
So we've got Tenth Avenue, so.
Yeah, and they're all in your CIP.
In terrible, terrible shape and we're not even talking about them.
Yeah, and, and like Bill says, uh, most of those roadways you just mentioned are in your five-year plan.
Yeah, I mean, you have to pick and choose and which one fits the needs and what, you gotta put the puzzle together because you only got so much money. And then you wanna do this one, well, that only leaves you this much left. Thirteenth, you do the whole thing because the problem that we have out there is this section up here is really bad. Well, you've got, you got a three-block section of roadway, but one is extremely bad. Say it's a one in a scale of one to five, being horrible. And the other one might be a three or, or a two or a five, you know, you never know. But it doesn't pay to bring in a paver and just do one, six hundred feet and then pull the paver up and keep the other stuff. That's, that was our thought on this one, so.
I know we had the five-year plan, but have we stopped doing alleys?
Nope, they're in the, they're in the, they're in the plan too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we went through all that.
A lot of people asking if, you know, we did them quite rapid for a while there and.
Well, if you.
Now there's a lot of alleys that are in dire need from what I.
If you remember back to my pavement maintenance plan that I gave to you guys, the, the needs out there will outweigh what we can do. But with the advent of some other funding oper- ops- options, excuse me, and also increasing, uh, uh, what you guys had put towards the overlay budget, we're gonna slowly increase at a hundred thousand a year so that we're gonna get up there. Remember if I said it was about one and a half to two million dollars a year? And this year we're only at eight hundred, so we gotta do it in little steps and try to pick out the ones that fit the need the best, so.
With that in mind, I, I would, I would, I would move we do the base bid and alternate one to St. Cloud agrees and for thirty thousand, we can do some alleys. I think that thirty thousand to put in the crosswalks is. It's a little tough to, to, to justify that to, to the, to the guy that's calling Mike and saying my alley's in tough shape and we spent thirty thousand dollars for.
My concern is how do we slow the traffic down on thirteen?
That's not gonna slow them down. It's just gonna make them go faster over to see if the lines go quicker.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's been studies that it does help with traffic calming. It, I'm not gonna kid you on it. I'm not gonna, but you're also gonna put signs up there to this, you know, they'll have the pedestrian crosswalks.
My biggest concern is we don't have any more of that crumbling top coat.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and nobody, I ask and nobody says boo about it because nobody wants to.
We're not the only city.
Figure out what's going on.
There was some asphalt someplace along in those years that was really some bad stuff because every city's got that, seems to have.
It's like whatever's bonding the sand together is washing away and we end up with sand.
I talked to some of the people in St. Cloud. St. Cloud's got a bad problem on a lot of their.
A lot of them. You look at all of them and you're like that.
They feel that was the, the mixture in the, in the seal coat that didn't agree with the, the tar.
But we're not gonna fix that problem. I got a motion to, to do the base bid and alternate one to St. Cloud agrees.
A second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Three to one. All right.
I wanted to do both.
Vic, you're up.
I'm up. Well, we have a.
Advertise for bids for.
We have a really old building over there on, uh, Eleventh Avenue South that it's time we do something with. And my thinking here is that, uh, we should be advertising that building for bids and seeing if we can't get it off our backs.
All right.
Is that a motion?
Add a motion?
I did make a motion.
Second.
I got further discussion.
Are there any stipulations that we need to add just besides going for bids on that building?
Gordon's got them.
I think I got them. We're talking about removal of the build that the buyer would have to remove the building, existing building.
Sixty days.
Within sixty days and the buyer takes it as is and the city reserves the right to reject all and any bids.
Excellent. All right, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Uh, review and approve bills.
Move to approve.
I'll second. I have a question on two of them though. Someone can get back to me. There was one in there for QuickTrip and then the note, it said something about sales tax.
Oh, that was.
What is that?
That was.
Five hundred and forty-something dollars.
That was for, uh, reimbursement of the sales tax on their car wash. They put in an exemption and we have to pay them back for what they've paid. Uh, we, 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 um, submit a, submit it to the state and the state pays us and then we have to pay QuickTrip back for that, that reimbursement of the sales tax they paid that is now exempt. And they can go back so many months. So that, that's what that payment was.
So it wasn't our money, it was state money that was.
Right. It was, it was their money that they paid to the state that we paid to the state and they got it back.
The other one is a police department purchase and I do believe the vendor's M and E. And one was for gas for fifty-four and a car washes. So I'd like to know who the vendor is and why we're buying gas if.
There was a Wex Bank payment to, it's for Super America for car washes and some Public Works gas for lawn mowers. Is that what you're talking about?
Oh, was it Public Works or was it?
Well, we buy.
Would you be buying gas there?
Well, we buy the premium for the small engines, so we buy that in the gas cans.
It's a non-oxygenated.
Right, so.
Maybe that's what it was then because I thought, I read it and it's like, and I thought there was a P because our bills are turned sideways.
Oh, yeah, but they didn't.
It's a little harder to read because I can't make it flip or.
Apologize.
You turn, uh, iPad and, but I thought it said P, but I thought it meant for.
It was Wex Bank. Police, police was the car washes.
Okay, and, uh.
And the gas is for Public Works.
Yeah, and you'll see a lot more of that this summer because of our smaller engines.
That's it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. I have a letter here that says, uh, from seven forty-two. And what they're doing is, uh, I'm writing to invite you to participate in the District Seven Forty-two Finance Study Group. For many years, the Finance Study Group is meant to provide community comment and discussion on financial information of, of the school district. This group meets in June, September, and November of each year. We value your input, uh, and insight on the financial operations of District Seven Forty-two. Please consider either attending or sending the appropriate designee to these meetings. Is there anyone here that would like to go? It looks like it's three a year. Uh, June, uh, what did I tell you? June, September, and November. So there's one coming up in a month and then November and December, or Septem- September and November.
Yeah, I don't think that's one for me.
Anybody?
I was gonna say.
Anybody, anybody?
You want me to go and, and be truthful or you want?
Mike's nominated.
You wanna, you wanna go, I'll, I'll call him and tell him you're, you're our designee.
Works for me.
Wanna do that, Mike? All right, somebody wanna move to Mike to be the designee?
I'll move for Mike.
All in favor? Opposed? Passed unanimously. Do you have any, do you have anything, Carla? Terry, you got anything else?
I do not.
Bill? John?
No, sir.
Chief? Gordon?
Nothing.
All right, how about the other guy in the back porch? All right, we are adjourned at holy bucket, seven fifty-six.
Like the old days.